The biggest issue in the world right now, the most important thing for you. We will talk about that tonight. Mike Baker joins us to talk about some spy stuff, foreign policy stuff, school board races, all that and more coming up on I'm Right. What are the worst atrocities of all time? Just off the top of your head, what pops into your head right off the bat when I talk about atrocities, however you want to label that? What are they? Holocaust is probably one of the first ones. That's one of the big ones, the Holocaust, World War II, murdering all the Jews. But there have been many holocausts of many different people, genocides. Maybe you thought about Rwanda. Maybe you thought about what happened to the Armenians. Who knows? Pick your atrocity. There's lots of them, aren't there? Now, if you think about the worst atrocities you've ever seen in your life, the Halodamore in Ukraine, all of it, what do they all have in common? Because there are different parts of the world, different groups involved, different people dying en masse. What do they all have in common? Every single one of them was done by the government, a government somewhere. Governments are poorly run, stupid, bloated, awful things. All of them are, all of them are. Everyone knows this by now. The founders talked about it all the time. So that's what governments do poorly. But there is one thing throughout history governments are really, really, really good at hurting people en masse. They're really good at hurting people. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that foreign policy doesn't matter. Foreign policy matters a lot. We're all going to end up in nuclear winter one day, right? And so it matters. I'm not here to dismiss things that are happening across the globe. There are big world changing things happening. But for you, for me, and it really applies to our Canadian listeners, our viewers, we have viewers all over the world, but this definitely applies to viewers of the West. I'm mainly talking to Americans here, though. The most important, the most dangerous situation for us is our own government turning its guns, and it has many inward, aiming its guns at the American people. And we're, look, why is this happening? On a macro level, and we'll talk about a few specific things that are happening right now in the country, but on a macro level, why is this happening? What's going on? Well, the leaders of Western civilization are all a bunch of evil dirtballs now. No more duty, no more love of country. These things don't stir the men who lead the West now. The men who lead the West now are in it to loot the West. They're only in it for money and power, handing money out to their friends, each other, exchanging things. And there's only, because they have so much power, they control all the institutions, you name it. They control the corporations, the government, the media, they have it all, the FBI, they have it all. So what's their danger? What's the danger to them if they have it all? Well, the people are the danger. You, you're the danger. What they can't afford, they're in there looting the treasury, all these robbers are in there just pillaging us. And it's going well for them, but what they absolutely cannot afford under any circumstances is the peasants finding out and rising up. They're very, very worried about you. And so, just like every evil government has ever done, they're going to keep you in line, keep you in check. You step out of order, they'll smash you. There's a situation going on, it's not getting a lot of publicity, you know it, you'll be aware of it, but your normie neighbor isn't. Remember when Roe versus Wade got overturned? It's this huge moment, Roe versus Wade gets overturned, abortion had been sadly enshrined into law since the seventies, okay? But Roe versus Wade gets overturned, and now the states get to decide for themselves whether we want to allow abortion, ban a completely partial ban, and the states are deciding for themselves. But the response to Roe versus Wade being overturned, it's one of the scariest things I've seen. And I'm not talking about the public response. I'm not talking about your liberal Aunt Peggy ruining Thanksgiving as she screams about her 15th abortion now being illegal. I'm not talking about that at all. The government response, you see Roe versus Wade got overturned, and because abortion is a sacrament to the communists, murdering babies en masse is something American communists love. They adore it. They're not ashamed of it. They don't hide away from it. They celebrate it. They push for it. They love murdering unborn babies. They really genuinely do. And now you took away their right to do that. In response to a Supreme Court ruling, the Department of Justice declared war on pro-lifers and started sending the FBI to their homes to arrest them. Do you understand how bonkers corrupt and crazy that is? No matter what you're feeling on life, it doesn't even, it's not the issue that matters. You, you can't use the Department of Justice as your hissy fit because you're upset about a Supreme Court ruling, and that's exactly what they did. Did you know the Biden administration has already put a dozen pro-life Americans in prison? This week, the DOJ, they're filing suit against so many of these people. Why? Because it wasn't enough to just arrest pro-lifers, throw them in prison. The United States government, in response to an abortion ruling, is now trying to financially ruin pro-life activists. You understand what kind of country we live in now? That is banana republic insanity. And that's the kind of country in which we live. Been 40 months since January 6, 2021. The federal government didn't just crack down on a couple dudes doing some acts of violence that day. 1,400 individuals have been hunted down by the federal government in response to that day. Five of them have committed suicide. Did you know that? And it's not just that this horror is happening, it's that one side, the Democrats, and I can't stand Republicans, so I'm not cheering for them, but one side, the Democrats loves it. They're cheering for it. We obviously will cover, we've covered all the lawfare going on against Trump all across the country. But let's just touch on something, because something happened last night in Georgia that really brings this home for you. Why? Why was there so much lawfare against Trump by different sources? Obviously, there was some White House Biden coordination, we know that now, but it wasn't just Merrick Garland, Jack Smith, DOJ, it's Alvin Bragg in New York, it's Fannie Willis in Georgia. It's all these dirty commies from different places in the country. Why are they all coming up with these crazy charges? They're all crazy. They're all crazy. New York may be the most ludicrous, but Georgia's was certifiably insane as well. Well, Georgia just had a primary last night. Fannie Willis, Fannie Willis, however you say your stupid name, after getting caught in a horrible corruption scandal and bringing a 100% politically motivated RICO charge against Donald Trump, she was not rebuked, cast away by Democrats in the Georgia primary. They looked at all of her corruption, the brazen abuse of the law, and Democrats locked arms and said, yeah, that's what I like.
So ladies and gentlemen, tonight, every now and then you get to stop and smell the roses. And tonight, we gonna stop and smell these roses. We are going to celebrate. We gonna party. The DA drinking Grey Goose in case anybody wonders.
Democrats, they didn't see what's happening to Donald Trump. They didn't see the legal system being used as an enforcement arm of the Democrat Party and pull back and cringe. They looked at what the DOJ was doing, what these DAs are doing to a politician they didn't like, a Republican they didn't like, and they loved it. It's why Fannie Willis did it. It's why Alvin Bragg is doing what he's doing in New York City, because that's what Democrats are now. They're all dirty communists. I know that's horrible. I know it's a rough place to be. But what's happening right now at the highest levels of our government is the scariest, most dangerous thing in the world. Did you hear, did you hear what James Comey said? He went on MSNBC. Did you hear what he said about the FBI? Listen to this.
What are the principal points of danger within the Justice Department if there's another Trump presidency, given his nature, given what you know about him?
He is a threat to the rule of law in America. That's, to me, that's what this election is about, not about policy differences, it's about what kind of country are we going to be? If he has the ability, smarter than he was last time, to use the power of the Department of Justice and the FBI to target his enemies especially, the rule of law in America will change in a way we haven't seen in our lifetime.
And so this is the point where the right steps up and says, they're already doing that now against Trump. I don't understand what he's talking about. I know you don't understand what he's talking about. James Comey is a communist activist. James Comey believes the rule of law should be used against political opponents, political opponents of the Democrats. This is not a James Comey policy. This is now the policy of the federal government. You see, the last bastion of freedom in Western civilization resides within the pockets of the American right. If the American right is finally smashed by these people, then they will achieve final victory, and they intend to achieve final victory. All the guns, all the force, all the things they've done to various countries, terrorist groups around the world, they have now reoriented all of those guns, and they're all aimed squarely at you. And this is what the right has failed to understand now, because there's a real cult of personality around Trump. When you have someone charismatic like that, he's going to create a cult of personality where people can't think straight. Either you love him or you hate him, and you just can't see straight, you can't think straight. People think Trump is some coup de grace for the left. Trump is the appetizer. As soon as they're all done with him, or he's done with them, oh, they're not going to back off. They're enjoying all these new powers and they intend to use them. All that may have made you uncomfortable, but I am right. Brianna Morello is going to, Morello is going to join us next, going to talk about this deadly force authorization for the Mar-a-Lago raid. What in the world is going on? We'll talk to her about James Comey and other things before we do that. Let's talk about the dirty timeshare companies that try to lock you into your timeshare. Don't fall for that lie. That's a lie. They all do this, too. They lie through their teeth to you. They tell you that you signed up for the timeshare, and even though you want out, you're not allowed out. In fact, you have to pay your annual fees, and they keep doubling the fees, don't they? Pay your special assessments. Why don't you get out? Oh, Jesse, I've tried. Have you called Lone Star Transfer? If you're calling the timeshare company, you're wasting your time, you're wasting your breath. Call Lone Star Transfer. They will legally and permanently get you out of your timeshare. They will. Just make a phone call. This is a family business. 99% of the time, they're successful, they're going to get you out. We'll be back.
When you think about a second Trump administration, what do you think the implications would be for the FBI?
Oh, serious, for the Justice Department and the FBI? Because Trump is coming for those institutions. He knows their power, and I think he has regrets that he didn't work hard enough to corrupt them last time. So he's coming for them, and that's a danger for all Americans. He's going to put people in positions in those organizations. He didn't have all-stars the last time, he'll have the bottom of the barrel this time. But people who will want to do his will, and that should worry every American. This election matters because of a reason like that. People have to participate. You cannot sit on the sideline. I don't care how you feel about Joe Biden, you must vote for him because the consequences on the other side are too severe.
It's kind of wild to think that we went from that turd as the head of the FBI to Christopher Wray. It's just a laundry list of turds that head that evil secret state police agency. Joining me now, my friend Brianna Morello, host of the Brianna Morello Show, which I'm sure is killing it, as I always knew it would. Okay, Brianna, I hate the FBI, and I do want to give James Comey credit because he just made a better Trump campaign speech than I've heard from Trump himself during this entire campaign. If he's actually going to do that, give me my MAGA hat, baby, I'm all in.
Yeah, he's hoping you hate President Trump enough to vote for Joe Biden. It doesn't sound like a good political strategy. So we'll see how that plays out, but I'd ultimately agree with you. Yeah, this is a great MAGA commercial. I mean, Comey's a joke these days. It's funny to see him getting the rounds. He's pushing a book, I believe, right now, and that's the reason why MSNBC is plotting him up there to be this amazing human being. He has no credibility, he's lied to the American people, but that's what gets you a gig these days on the corporate media world, and he just seems to be loving it. I just, it's funny to listen to him saying all these things because he is extremely corrupt, and they always do this. I mean, you remember, Jesse, every single election cycle, they tell you this is the most important election ever, and you have to show up because Donald Trump is evil. They can't list their accomplishments because there are none, and well, they're just hoping that your hatred for President Trump, that they've been trying to lie to the American people about for a very long time, will be the reason why you go out and vote. And that's the only thing that they have standing behind them these days.
Yeah, it is. All right, speaking of the FBI, yesterday, everybody got all hot and bothered because the Mar-a-Lago documents came out. It looked like the FBI had authorized the use of deadly force, pretty standard operating procedure, or was it standard operating procedure? You dug into this, what's the deal?
Yeah, so I asked around because initially, when I saw this, I was, like many, I was like, oh, my gosh, they authorized deadly force? But then I thought it through, and a couple of seconds later, and realized, well, I mean, do they have to get authorization to use deadly force? That doesn't make any sense. Like, they get on the phone, and they're doing a raid, and then say, hey, listen, they just opened fire on us, can we shoot back? Doesn't really make sense from that standpoint. So I've reached out to about 10 law enforcement friends that I have, even lawyers, criminal defense attorneys, and all 10 of them tell me this is standard, standard procedures. You automatically, as an agent, as a federal agent, have the authority to use deadly force when you need to. And if you go to the Department of Injustice's website, they'll also tell you on their website that their agents are allowed to use deadly force when they deem necessary. So all the information is at our fingertips right now, and I think it's really important to drive home to the American people. Don't believe me, who knows? I could be just giving you talking points. Go to the DOJ's website, it says it right there. They already have the authority, so it doesn't make sense that they have to apply for that. Now, I'll be fair here, and this is, I've always said this, they should have never raided his home in the first place, there was no reason for it. He has presidential immunity, I strongly believe in that. And so the raid was completely unnecessary. But to sit here and pretend like there was some deadly force that was issued exclusively for this raid is foolish. Now, they also weren't going to get into a shootout with Secret Service. Again, that doesn't make any sense. They knew the president was not home at the time of the raid, and so none of this is really adding up. And I need everyone just to take a step back, breathe, and realize that our intel community wants political tensions to be at all time high because that's when they thrive. They're trying to booster domestic terrorist numbers in our country, and I report on this quite often. They're doing a lot of creative things to pretend like there's a lot of domestic terrorist threats. And when they say domestic terrorists, they're referring to you guys at home because they don't like your beliefs. They know that you're pushing back against the federal government, you're not a supporter of the weaponization of our federal government. And so they talk about you guys at home when they say that stuff. So it's important to remember, we don't push these narratives without all of our research first. We should always do our research because you don't want to drive somebody who might have a couple of screws missing in their head to do something that will then validate the federal government's weaponization by saying, yeah, now we have to go out there, and we have to start raiding the home of a MAGA supporters because, well, they are a threat. So everyone, take a big breath in before you go out there and you get really upset about these things, because we have to be careful with what we say, we have to do our research before we put it out there.
I've got a couple screws loose in my head, as everybody knows. Okay, by the way, I want to bring, I want you to focus on this for a moment. What are they doing out there? You said they're doing a lot of things to try to make it look like we're a bunch of dirty domestic terrorists. What are they doing?
Yeah, so the J-6 cases that they've opened up, they intentionally open up independent ones. So instead of it being one big domestic terrorist case, they intentionally have all the field offices opening up individual cases. And we know that thanks to FBI whistleblower Steve Friend. So I've reached out several times to the DOJ when Merrick Garland gets up there and he says that domestic terrorists is a major threat, white supremacy, and I always ask them for the statistics. They don't have any stats. They're looking to gather those stats now. And so, like I mentioned, the J-6 stuff is very, very important to remember, those are all individual cases rather than they should just be one case as a whole. That's how it's normally handled. Now, it's also important to note, last year, and I've been working on this story for quite some time, the FBI, of course, doesn't want to comply with me when I'm asking for documents through FOIA requests, but there was a gentleman killed in Utah for threatening Joe Biden. And, well, they sent in the SWAT team, knowing that this man probably wasn't very well in the head. He might have had some mental health issues, but he showed up to the front door with a gun, and sadly, he was killed upon this. Now, they say it was a gun, I should also say, this is our federal government saying this. We don't have any body cam footage, there was local police on the scene. I've asked for that body cam footage, and I've been rejected every time I've submitted a FOIA request. But it's important to note, the FBI normally wouldn't be the agency executing that type of a warrant. It would actually be Secret Service calling an individual in for an interview. And the reason I know that and can tell you with certainty is that incident in Utah was treated very differently than when an individual, a female, threatened President Trump just a couple of weeks after that, and his son Baron. Ultimately, she was called in and she was interviewed, she didn't get the secrets, she didn't get the FBI banging down her front door at 6:00 AM treatment, and she was arrested and charged, but she wasn't, she wasn't at, she didn't get the threat of the FBI banging down her front door. So again, they're trying to booster those numbers, they're trying to say that it's a right wing issue, and that's why they're doing all of this. So we have to be very cautious.
Yeah, we do. All right, I have to ask, what's going on with you and the TSA and DHS? What are you doing, bringing drugs through the airport or something?
Well, not anymore these days. Now I've got a show, so we don't have to do that anymore. But Jesse, it's pretty funny. So when you go up to TSA, many of you are probably very familiar with it. They do this little facial recognition thing at 80 airports across the country. They ask you for your ID, you slide it into a little slot, and then they just tell you to stand there, and then they take a quick picture. Now, many of you might not be familiar with that picture. It is facial recognition software that's being used to get your biometric data. Now, they don't want to talk about it, you do have the option to opt out of it, they won't tell you directly. What they'll tell you is just to quickly take the picture, and then that's it. They'll also tell you that the image deletes. Now, I went through a lot of documents, took me about a whole weekend, and I was very suspicious about this whole deleting process. So I reached out to TSA directly, and I asked them specifically, are you deleting these images, or are you deleting them after you've already forwarded them to DHS? Because it was very clear in the documents that I read that there was a kind of setup for that. And according to TSA, their press secretary, they did admit that a limited amount of these images are being sent to DHS. But they won't tell you that, they don't tell politicians that, and they are looking to expand this program. So that is very, very important. And you mentioned DHS also. I'd like to take a second to show off this bad boy. They just, well, this is actually a couple of weeks ago, they recently accidentally forwarded me an email where DHS is warning TSA that I am an unfavorable reporter, and that they have to be careful with the type of information they're giving me because, well, I will run it. And so they accidentally sent this to me, it was a TSA employee, she accidentally attached it to an email and forwarded it to me. And so now this beauty is framed, and that person is probably unemployed.
That is fantastic. Brianna, come back soon, I appreciate you. All right. Mike Baker, got all kinds of foreign policy stuff, former CIA dude. Talk to the spook in just a moment. Before we get to him, let's talk about Blackout Coffee. Greatest coffee ever. Coffee they deliver to your front door, and much more important than the delivery, that's nice. The flavor's nice, it's the best coffee I've ever had. But they share our values. We have to put our money where our morals are. Now that the corporate world has chosen to get involved, we have to put our money where our morals are. Blackout Coffee doesn't just share our values, you know, God, guns, life, America, they promote them, they talk about them, they shout them from the rooftops. And 20% off your first order? Go gobble up a pile of Blackout Coffee, I got bags of it in my freezer, it's the best. Blackoutcoffee.com/Jesse is how you get some, all right? We'll be back. I have amazing news for you. So you know the President's Daily Brief? The President's Daily Brief? It's Mike Baker's podcast, it's friggin' awesome, where you just get really, really smart in a very condensed period of time. Well, did you know that now, Friday nights, after my show, you can watch it on the First TV? Of course, Mike Baker's blowing up all over the place. Joining me now, my friend Mike Baker, the host of the President's Daily Brief. Okay, Mike, I am, I'm so happy for you that you get to follow me on Friday night. What an honor for you.
I know. You know what it's like in the old days when they would slot your sitcom after Friends, right? Or the sign. It couldn't have been better. And so when they told me, I mean, my first reaction was, you know, isn't Friends still on? Couldn't I follow them? But yeah, it's great, and I appreciate you mentioning it because it's, we just started it, the Situation Report, it's a lot of fun, adds a little, you know, gives us more time to talk about things as opposed to the morning and afternoon PDB. But we still try to just keep it to the news and some analysis rather than, you know, swing off into the edges there.
Okay, to be clear, before we move on to the other things going on in the world, are we still going to get morning and afternoon PDB? I need to get smarter before my show is, Mike.
Oh, of course, yeah. Yeah, no, absolutely. No, this, this is just an additional thing, because apparently I wasn't busy enough. And so we've got the PDB morning, then the afternoon brief, which is even briefer than the morning. It does not take up a lot of people's time, but as you pointed out, you get key topics, we get in, we get out, Bob's your uncle. But the weekend gig, the Friday night weekend gig is just an extended opportunity, and plus it's on video, which means it's moving pictures. So I'm very excited about that.
All right, let's switch some gears. Did the Israelis kill Iran's president?
No, no. Bad terrain, bad weather, and a very old platt air asset ended up killing Raisi and the Foreign Minister, Abdalwahian, and provincial governor and a couple others. I know it's, there's been a lot of, because there always will be, something like this happens, the first thing you're going to get is, oh, it's Israelis, oh, it must be the CIA. I've heard that one several times in the past couple of days. But the truth of the matter is, they were flying in a very, very old Bell 212 helicopter, and the terrain up there is awful along that border with Azerbaijan, and the weather was as bad as it could get. So it's, you know, it's, look, you don't want any, well, I was about to say, you don't want anyone to die, you don't want to wish ill upon anyone, but Raisi was a horrible, brutal individual who got to the top of the heap at the Iranian regime by being more brutal and more oppressive than others.
You know what? Let's, I hate to ask a detailed technical question, Mike, but I found that to be so odd because after reading everything, I came to the same conclusion, it's foggy, crappy terrain, old crappy helicopter. Now, I realize Iran is not the United States of America financially, but they do have enough money floating around. Isn't it odd that such a big cheese, important person would, one, even fly in such conditions? And, two, why is he in a World War I helicopter? I'm exaggerating, but why is he in that ancient piece of crap?
Yeah, well, first of all, I'm impressed that you know Farsi, because the word for Iranian president in Farsi is big cheese. And so, you know, he definitely, look, he, you would think that they would put him in the best platform they could, and, you know, maybe in those circumstances and where they were flying out, I remember they were using local assets because of where they were, they'd gone up to open a joint dam project with Azerbaijan. And so, you know, it wasn't as if they were flying these helicopters from Tehran, but and, you know, frankly, never miss an opportunity from the Iranian regime's perspective to blame the US for anything. They've actually said, look, it's the US's fault for this crash because of your sanctions, meaning the US sanctions, we haven't been able to modernize our air force. And so therefore, it's the US's fault.
Yeah, of course. Okay, let's focus on foreign relations. I could easily see our allies, our enemies, a realignment of American foreign policy, especially with what's going on right now in Israel. Biden administration's worried about their poll numbers, worried about reelection, keep throwing stumbling blocks in front of the Israelis. Israelis aren't happy about it, they're basically giving Biden the middle finger. What's happening right now, Mike?
Yeah, we're seeing a very interesting confluence of events, right? First of all, Hamas is being rewarded for their terrorism because you're starting to get a break in what had been precedent, meaning the concept that you don't, the only way you get a two-state solution involving Israel and Palestine was direct negotiations between those parties, right? But now, I mean, just today, Norway and Spain and Ireland came out and said that they will have a ceremony on the 28th of May announcing that they will be recognizing the Palestinian state. And that's a, that's a, that's a serious break with tradition because you haven't had any Group of Seven nations involved in that, you know, position before. So you've got this going on, you've got the Biden administration trying to figure out So you've got this going on, you've got the Biden administration trying to figure out their policy towards Israel based on poll numbers and the desire not to lose the youth vote and the Arab American vote, particularly in places like Michigan. So that's a bad situation when you're talking about how you plot and plan your foreign policy and your national security concerns. You don't do that by paying attention to your domestic polling numbers, but that's what they're doing. And then you've got this ramped up effort by China and Russia and Iran at the present time to basically become a throuple. I, I just heard that word the other day, so I wanted to use it. But, you know, they're all, they're, you know, there's not enough room in that king-sized bed for Xi and, and the Iranian regime and Putin, but they're trying. And that's a, that's a very worrisome situation because they're doing it for different reasons. China's doing it because they, they see this as a, as a good opportunity to continue to push us off the top of the food chain. Russia's doing it because they desperately need China's assistance if they're going to continue their war effort, and Iran's doing it because it benefits Iran, it's in their self-interest. So, yeah, there is a lot happening right now, people need to pay attention because we are at a very, very difficult and potentially dangerous moment in time.
Speaking of dangerous, the Strategic Petroleum Reserve, it's not there to improve your presidential poll numbers, it's not even there to reduce gas prices, it's there for other reasons, yet we continue to drain this thing, Mike, and we're draining it a lot, and I'm getting concerned.
Well, you should be, and it's, I'm really glad you pointed it out because it doesn't get the coverage that it should. It's a very important topic. Look, there's, there's two parts to this. One is, yeah, it's not designed to, to release, you know, quantities there when you want to drop the gas prices before an election, but that's what's been happening, right? And so again, letting domestic polling numbers and political concerns drive your national security interests because that's, that's a problem, right? People should understand that, but that's what the White House has been doing, witness the fact, not to stray off course, but they've just canceled another $7.7 billion in student debt, you know, in their vote buying scheme that's been going on for some time now to cancel out debt and win back the youth vote, or at least shore up the youth vote. So, but the, the Petroleum Reserve is a, is a serious problem because at the same time as we're doing that, obviously, we're not focused on being energy independent. And hey, I, you know, God bless the green energy movement and we should be doing that, we should be moving in that direction eventually, but we should be doing everything right now because we're not getting to an all EV future, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now. You know what? It's not going to happen 20 years from now. So fossil fuels need to continue to play a role here while we let the markets and capitalism do its thing and develop new battery technology and new abilities to have a green energy future.
You're a much nicer guy than me, Mike. I don't want a green energy future, I want coal plants on every friggin' corner. Okay, you know, before I let you go though, I need to ask about Niger. I don't understand why I should care about this country, but really smart foreign policy people like you continue to tell me I should care about what's going on there. Make me smart, Mike, why?
Yeah, Niger is, is, you know, you say tomato, I say tomato, it's, you know, I say Niger. And it's, it's important because it's another indication that our eyes off the ball and that we're losing influence overseas. So Niger demanded that our personnel leave, and we've been running a base there, a very important counterterrorism base since about 2012 or so. Not, not a lot of personnel, about 1,000 military and others that were there, working on counterterrorism issues, working on training concerns with local African forces, you know, very important activities. And Niger has a military junta that has veered towards Russia and away from the West and recently demanded that American forces leave. Leave the base, get out of the country. The base, by the way, cost us about $100 million to construct. And now it's being taken over by Russian military forces, so congratulations. But it's, it's important because again, it shows this, this, this problem that we have. We get hyper-focused on typically on one issue, and we lose focus on other things. We, we don't use resources and pay attention to and build relationships where we need to. We did it in Latin America for a period of time, and we ended up with Chavez and a bunch of other problems in, in Central and South America because we just took our eye off the ball and didn't consider how strategically important that area is. We've done the same with Africa. The DRC is another area that's, that's, you know, moving away from our interests. So we've got, we've got problems and it's almost as if we can't multitask. It's not just this current administration because it's happened before in the past with other administrations. I think it, it might be a uniquely American problem that we have a difficult time multitasking.
Yeah, what a shock, the government's stupid. Mike, thank you, brother. It's the President's Daily Brief Podcast, go download it. All right, let's talk about education. Before we talk about education, I want to talk to you about this though. I want to talk to you about sleep. I get excited because it changes, honestly, it changes your life. I know that sounds a little dramatic, but when you wake up having a good night's sleep, everything's better. Everything is better. So what do you take? There's a million things out there that can help you sleep. What do you take? I've never been able to take anything, I'll be honest with you. Every single thing I've ever taken in my life has made me groggy the next day. Every single thing, until I found Dream Powder from Beam. This stuff, it's not drugs, it's all natural stuff, melatonin, things like that. It's delicious. I essentially drink a cup of cinnamon hot chocolate right before bed, and I just kind of drift off to sleep. And I don't wake up and roll over, I don't wake up and do anything, I'm just out eight, nine hours. Remember what that's like? And when I wake up, I am clear-eyed and ready to roll. Go get some Dream Powder, 40% off right now. Get some Dream Powder, you'll love it. We'll be back. It's an election year, did you know that? Well, of course you know that, everyone knows that. All anyone can talk about is the presidency, is Trump going to be Biden, Biden going to be Trump, what about this or that? But you understand that we could lose in November, I don't want to, but we could lose in November and still have an amazing year because the path to saving this country is not through the White House, it's through the school boards. The dirty commies started teaching our children and that's how they took over the country, and we can take it back. Joining me now, founder of Four Kids in Country, Rebecca Fredericks. Rebecca, I love what you do, I love people involved in school board races, explain to people why they matter.
Great, well, thanks for having me. School boards matter because the so-called teacher unions, who by the way, do not represent teachers, they are communists who exploit the teaching profession in order to get their hands on our vulnerable children. Well, the teachers' unions have been controlling school boards across this country for decades. They pour millions into school board races, they put out all kinds of fancy glossy flyers, and they get terrified teachers to do their bidding, going door to door and all of that. And people have been voting against their values for decades, voting for union candidates on school boards. So it's just really important that we get true American patriots to stand up and run for school boards and, by the way, to go to school board meetings and support, support those school board candidates because the unions are angry and their, you know, their favored legislators that they support all the way from the White House, all the way down to the school board level are just, I mean, fighting back with a vengeance against school board members that dare to do what's right, that dare to say, no, we're not going to lie to parents, no, we're not going to sexualize children. And so it's really, you could tell by their reaction to these good school board members that we are a threat when we push back on unions and their system.
Normal people watching this, they don't want dirtballs educating their kids, they want a better education system, they want the school board to change, but they need to run for office, they need to run for it, and they get scared when you bring that up because running for office is intimidating. Can you talk to people thinking about doing it? What's involved and how do they do it?
Well, sure, I, I know exactly why they're scared because in the, in the recent past in this country, if you're on the side of good and on side of protecting children, you didn't have any help when you were running for school boards. You go out there on your own with no money and you had this huge wicked behemoth against you funded by the teachers, so-called teachers' unions. And so I can see why people are afraid. So what needs to happen is the community needs to stand up with whomever is running for school board. You can't just send somebody out to the wolves on their own and expect them to survive and expect them to win. So you have to stand up together. One of the best things I've seen done is a local pastor worked together with his community and started a PAC, and they started raising hundreds of thousands of dollars to put some real money behind these school board candidates. It shouldn't cost a lot to run for school board, but because of the unions, it does. So you need a community behind you, you need money behind you, you need people going door to door for you, you need all those things that the unions already have baked into their plan so that you can actually come up against this giant system that's, that's out to get your kids. But, but there's one other thing. A lot of people don't realize, for decades, teachers, I, I was a teacher, 28 years in California public schools, for decades, all teachers in America were required as a condition of employment to fund unions. And unions are collecting about $5 billion annually from teachers, just teachers. They get that tax-free and they're using it to destroy this country. So the other thing that people can do is help us to educate teachers that, I sued the unions, myself and some other teachers here in California, and we ended this situation where you're forced to fund unions. No one is forced to fund a teacher union anymore or any other government union in the United States of America. So if people would stop giving union dues to these government unions, then the unions wouldn't have all this money to come after our candidates and to dominate our school boards and to molest our children and all the other things they're doing. So it's really important that we stop feeding that giant and we stand up to that giant and run against it.
Rebecca, can you explain to people who don't understand how it works, how and why these teachers' unions get this putrid sex ed into schools? And I'm not talking about birds and the bees stuff, obviously everyone knows what I'm talking about, all the tranny madness and disgusting stuff. How, how and why do teachers' unions do that?
Yeah, well, the first thing people need to know is they're not teachers and they're not really a union. They exploit teachers, I mentioned earlier, so that they can get hands, their hands on our kids. So these so-called teacher unions are communists, and this is what communists do. If you are going to take, as America's a constitutional free republic, we are a free nation with representatives that we elect to go to, to represent us in our government system, well, communists don't like that system. They want to undermine our free republic and they want to replace it with a socialist slash communist system where all of us are a bunch of serfs basically, we're poor, we're, you know, we're not doing very well, and we're run by a bunch of tyrants. So why would they do this to our children? It's because they want to destroy our country. So the, the foundation of a constitutional republic or any healthy society is the family. So the first thing you have to do is attack the family. And how do you attack the family? Well, you sexualize the children, you turn them against their parents, you tell them their parents are bad people, bigots, all these other things. And if you can undermine the family, you can undermine the whole culture. But there's one other thing. Our American founders gave us a big clue in their writings. They told us that the only way to keep this free republic is with a well-educated and moral citizenry that can self-govern. So they have to make our children immoral, they have to sexualize them so that they have no morals and, you know, break them from their family, and they also have to dumb them down, which is why these unions have also done a lot of things in our schools to dumb them down, including removing phonics. We used to have, you know, a citizenry that was reading and writing fantastically, now we have millions of functional illiterates and a bunch of dyslexia going on. That's all by design, the unions did all of it. So they're not our friends, they're not the friends of teachers, they're not there to protect children, they are communists there to use the teaching profession, to infiltrate our schools, to undermine our children, to undermine our culture.
Amen. Rebecca, that was awesome. I wish you were my teacher back in the day, appreciate you very, very much. All right. Way of lightening the mood. It's boating season. Hang on. All right, it's time to lighten the mood and it's boating season, so let's bring it in the, the way we do. Oof, that last one. I see them all.